To be with those who are grieving their loss and for your guidance to all these who continue to serve. May we never forget the price of freedom and may we always strive to live in a way that honors and memory of those who gave their all. We pray for peace in our world and for an end to conflict and violence. May your love and mercy guide us as we strive to create a more just and peaceful world. God bless America in Jesus's name, amen.
On May 16, 2025, the Acting County Administrator approved for the Department on Aging, the hiring of Jason Nelson to the position of full-time maintenance coordinator, number 1013, to be effective June 23, 2025, at the rate of $23.24 per hour with one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. Also approved was the hiring of Melinda Sue Whitaker to the position of part-time adult day service assistant, number 1041-1, to be effective June 2, 2025, at the rate of $19.23 per hour with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. Also, on May 16, the Acting County Administrator acknowledged for job and family services, the following new hire appointments as the executive director of Job and Family Services, complied with the Board of Commissioners recruitment and hiring procedures for Amy Piotrowski, Clerical Specialist III, replacement, effective March 18, 2025. On May 27, 2025, the county administrator amended for the Department on Aging, the motion from May 15, 2025, to revise the start date to read, approved hiring Jason Nelson to the position of full-time maintenance coordinator, 1013, to be effective June 16, 2025, at the rate of $23.24 per hour with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. Does it feel weeks?
Thank you. Item number three, Commissioner's Office requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for meeting of April 22, 25.
Second.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Breck.
Aye.
Yes.
Hold on one second, Jamie, missed number two.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're not doing this.
Oh, number two?
We missed that too, yeah.
So that's the next one.
So I'll cover that. On May 20, 2025, the county administrator approved traveling encumbrances from the Department on Aging to attend the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging Drive Train the Trainer course and from the Clerk of Courts to attend the July 2025 Ohio Clerk of Courts Association meeting. Also approved on May 20 were the following vouchers. $72,534 from the Commissioners to Lake Geoga Recovery Centers for the jail treatment program being paid out of the opioid settlement fund. $9,109.25 from the Dog Warden to Cable Communications for the installation of security cameras at the shelter. $46,700 from the Engineer to Illuminati Labs LLC for the addition of T-Mobile to their distributed antenna cell signal enhancement system. $67,201.4 from the Sheriff to Motorola Solutions, Inc. for an event tied logging recorder for capturing, recording, and archiving 911 calls. And that is all.
Thank you. Item number four, Commissioner's Office requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for special meeting of April 24, 25.
Second.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Breck.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes. And item number five, the Commissioner's Office requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of April 29, 25.
Second.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Breck.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes. Item number six, financials.
Oh, I have nothing, sorry. My, I haven't updated agenda. Oh, yes, I will. Yes, thank you. Adrian Gordon from the Commissioner's Office, here to discuss the financials for today. Among the financials are a cash transfer from the Board of DD from their operating fund to the Residential Services Fund for Medicaid waiver and locally funded services. Among the encumbrances are travel encumbrances from the Common Police Court to attend the National Association for Court Management Promoting Public Trust and Confidence Conference from the Juvenile Court to attend the 2025 Ohio Chief Probation Officers Association Line Officers Training and from the veterans to attend the summer and fall Commissioners Conference. There's also a contract purchase order from Maintenance to Duzen Bobcat North America Incorporated for the purchase of a new model year replacement skid steer loader, and I've been told the old one will be auctioned. Among the vouchers are $19,899 from the Auditor's Office to Integrity Appraisal Services for the 2025 new construction appraisal services. $8,453.14 from the Commissioners Office to Destination Geoga for the first quarter 2025 bed tech distribution and $145,793.99 from the Engineers Office to Southeastern Equipment for a new model Case 721G replacement articulated wheel loader, which is replacing a 2018 model that was traded in on the new one for $100,000.
I move to approve the financials.
Second.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Breck.
Aye.
Yes. And the next item on the agenda is, these are the accounting and payroll authorization forms, so we're just updating them to include Amy on them. So I'll go ahead and read this. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the revised accounting forms, authorization form, and payroll authorization form for the Department on Aging, Building, Commissioners Office, Community and Economic Development Department, Department of Emergency Services, Dog Warden Maintenance, and Department of Water Resources.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Breck.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Carmella.
Good morning. So we are.
State your name.
Oh. I'm Carmella Shale with Geoga Southern Water Conservation District. I'm the Director and Engineer. We are requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the 2024 Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program Cooperative Agreement between the Ohio Department of Agriculture and the Geoga County Board of Commissioners, who is a local sponsor, regarding funding to be allocated for the protection of Ohio farmlands against conversion to non-agricultural use in the amount of $110,554 for the acquisition of agricultural easements approved by the Ohio Department of Agriculture. And this is for the Hope Farm easement that we have got approved for and we should be closing on in about a month there in Thompson.
So just to make sure I understand the process. So the land remains privately owned.
Correct.
But they just promised not to develop it and to keep it as farmland.
Exactly.
And then the 110-ish thousand dollars, that comes from the state?
Ohio Department of Agriculture.
Okay.
Clean Ohio Fund.
Okay.
And that goes to the landowner.
Okay, perfect. That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
No problem.
So I'll move to approve number eight.
Second.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Breck.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. And along with that, as I said, we'll probably be closing on the, this 2024 easement for the Hope Farm. So we are requesting the Board approve and authorize someone to execute the easement closing documents, including the Ohio Department of Agriculture assignment of payment form on behalf of the Geoga County Board of Commissioners for the 2024 Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program for the Hope easement. And that would be going to the title office, signing all the papers.
So can we have Ms. Bevan do that? Can you handle that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve nine authorizing Ms. Bevan to execute the documents. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Breck.
Aye.
Yes.
And I'll have that assignment soon and then I can just bring it up. Thank you very much.
So Carmella, what is the current use then, or what are they farming there?
Bob Lawson, he currently farms and rotates it in various beans, worms.
Yeah, that's excellent. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning.
My name is Miriam Kiefer. I'm the Director of Public Policy at United Way of Greater Cleveland. Thank you for having me here today. I will be by myself today. Unfortunately, Karen Perko is unable to join me today. And I'll be talking about United Way's Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed Report, also known as ALIS, and some of the data that it talks about for Geoga County. So every year, United Way puts out a report that talks about those in our communities that do not have enough income to make ends meet. And so this data goes, it's drilled down at the local level, at the county level, at the neighborhood level, at the state level, and it goes beyond the federal poverty data that we have. The data at the federal level is, that number is the same regardless of where you live. So if you live in a lower or higher cost living area, the federal poverty line is the same. And so what the ALIS dataset does is that it looks at what the average cost of living is in a locality and whether or not individuals living in that locality have enough income to make ends meet. And it just looks at the basic costs of living, housing, food, healthcare, transportation. And then it also provides some additional information for the type of household. So for families with young children, it adds information on the average cost of childcare. For families with older adults, it adds information on increased healthcare costs. And so for, I'll talk just a little bit about the Ohio data and then I'll talk specifically about the Geoga County data. So for the state of Ohio, if we just looked at data from the federal government on the federal poverty line, about 14% of households in Ohio are below that federal poverty line. But yet when we look at the data from United Way, about additional 25% of the state do not have enough income to make ends meet. So we're looking at about 39% of the entire state. Just to cover the cost of basics for a family of four in Ohio is $65,000. And for two children, childcare, it's $79,000. Again, kind of trends over time in the state of Ohio. If we just look at the federal poverty line data, poverty has remained relatively flat in the state of Ohio, which is, which is a good thing. However, when we look at the ALIS data, that number tends to increase year over year. In addition, at the state of Ohio, older adults that are, do not have enough income to make ends meet, that number has increased almost every single year for the past decade. Now for Geoga County specifically, again, when we look at the poverty data, only about 6% of the population is living below that federal poverty line. Yet when we look at the ALIS data, 22% of the county does not have enough income.
Mary, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
How does the Amish population figure into that, those statistics for Geoga County?
That's a really wonderful question. When we break down the county data by neighborhood.
Oh, I did see that, that that is, we're disproportionately.
Correct.
We see the amount of poverty is in Middlefield, Middlefield Village.
Correct. So 46% of the, of the households in Middlefield Village and 40% of the households in Middlefield Township do not have enough income to make ends meet. We unfortunately don't have the data broken down by, you know, at that level, you know, identifying which households are Amish versus which are not, but we can kind of get a sense of that through looking at the neighborhood data.
Yeah.
That's a really wonderful question. And then just looking at some demographics, so 39% of households with older adults do not have enough income to make ends meet in the, in the county. Just looking at the average cost of just the basics in, in Geoga County, the data doesn't look very different than our neighboring county, Cuyahoga County. The cost of living is relatively the same. Housing is a little bit less in Geoga County because taxes are a little bit lower in, in Geoga County, but, and, but childcare is the highest cost for any household budget in Geoga County at $1,900 a month for two children in childcare. That's higher than housing, that's higher than food for, for a family's budget. Also, when we look at, we can break down the data by employment sector as well. For those working in Geoga County in retail trade or manufacturing, they have some of the highest percentage of workers who are working, working full-time, but not, do not have enough income to make ends meet. So 62% of, of workers working full-time do not have enough income to make ends meet in the county. And then when we look at just, again, that family of four with two kids in childcare, that average cost is about 90,000 in Geoga County. Even if you have two workers working full-time in those two common jobs in the county, the most common jobs, retail trade and manufacturing, they would be about $18,000 short, or $17,000 short of, you know, sustaining their family. And then just looking at housing as well, you know, as the cost of housing has increased, not only here in the county, you know, with increases in property tax, but across the state and across the country as well, about 50%, a little over, 60% of owners are cost burdened. So they are spending over 30% of their income on, on housing. So their mortgage, utilities, property tax, things like that. And then just very quickly, how we use the ALIS data at United Way of Greater Cleveland. We run for Geoga County, the 24/7/365 Information and Foral Line 211. Where individuals who are needing assistance with finding employment or needing, trying to find assistance with property taxes or social security, they can call our 211 line, 24/7/365. They're connected to a live individual who will help, help them find local organizations that can assist them. We served over 1,000 Geoga residents in 2024 through our 211 program. We also have a variety of initiatives that United Way funds in Geoga County, specifically helping ALIS households. So one is our Aging and Disability Resource Center. In 2024, we, we served over 600 individuals by providing them with home-delivered meals. We provided over 1,300 individuals with support services such as helping them navigate social security benefits, Medicare benefits, and we also provided over $25,000 in utility assistance, especially as it gets very cold or gets very hot.
Electric schools are gonna spike in June, too.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. We also have our Bridges at Work program where we partner with several businesses in Geoga County where we provide a $1,500 interest-free loan and also provide case management services through Catholic charities where they provide financial education, credit counseling. And this helps individuals who are facing a crisis. So it's if they're trying to get to work, their car breaks down, they don't have any money in savings, and so they're able to work with us and their employer to apply for this interest-free loan. The way the loan is paid back is deductions are taken out of their, out of their paychecks. And so it gets automatically paid back. And then some of the great things about this program is that fewer employers are missing work because they're able to manage a crisis. And this also gets reported to the Credit Bureau, so it helps improve their credit score as well and so helps them lead on to a better path of financial success rather than getting a payday loan or, or something like that. The last area that we work on is the Geoga Poverty Collaborative. We fund seven organizations in Geoga County to provide up to $1,000 in one-time assistance for individuals facing a crisis. We collaborate with the Geoga County Job and Family Services, the Department of Aging, and the Adams Board, and we provide case management to ensure that further crises do not happen to, and continue to stabilize the family. And just how the county can use the data, I'm again prioritizing policy proposals that address the real cost of living, evaluate program eligibility thresholds, using the ALIS data as a benchmark to analyze potential impact of legislation, and then informing economic development and workforce strategies, integrating ALIS data into performance metrics for county-funded Any, I know there was a lot of information, very quickly, and I do apologize, I forgot to mention, you know, it's a really, it's a pleasure and honor to be here today. I'm a Geoga County resident, I live in Russell Township, so it's, it's really great to, me too, with you all. Wonderful.
So I have tons of questions, but I'll keep it short so my Commissioners don't start yelling at me. But what trends have you noticed in the last, you know, five, 10, 15 years regarding poverty and ALIS data? I know you said in Ohio, it looks like that poverty trend seemed to be pretty flat, but what about, you know, in Geoga and Northeast Ohio?
Yeah, that's a really wonderful question. So for Geoga County specifically, poverty has, like the state, poverty has remained flat. Over, over the past decade, ALIS population has gone up and down, but since 2019, it has continued to rise slightly. In Cuyahoga County, just as a comparison, very similarly, poverty has remained flat in Cuyahoga County, but the ALIS population has continued to rise in Cuyahoga County.
And do we think that's related to the cost in housing going up and then just the cost of everything going up, right?
Correct.
Food and gasoline and.
Correct. So yeah, as the cost of basic living has increased, wages have not kept up with that, with that inflation.
Okay. And then what, what do you think are some of the biggest obstacles in this county to getting people out of poverty or above that, that ALIS threshold?
Yeah, no, that's a really, that's a really wonderful question. I think, you know, part of it is, is that, you know, when we look at, just when we look at the ALIS data, older adults in the county are, not only is the older adult population increasing.
Right.
Those that are struggling to make ends meet continue to increase. A lot of older adults are on fixed incomes.
Right, right.
And when costs increase, you know, you're on a fixed income, there's not, there's not much, there's not much wiggle room to go.
Absolutely.
And so some of the services that we provide, I think are, you know, essential in helping older adults, you know, through our Aging and Disability Resource Center, but also the other nonprofit organizations that we fund in, in the county.
Well, thank you for coming in today. I don't have anything else to contribute.
Thank you for having me. And I'll leave copies of the, the report and also the Geoga County report as well.
Okay.
Thank you so much for the detailed report.
Thank you.
Should we skip to 12 since we're not at 10 yet?
Sure.
I feel like we can rip through ADP fast, right, Frank? Let's go, let's go.
Let's take on item number 12.
Commissioner Sprecher, speaking. Frank Antonucci, Automatic Data Processing Board. Item number 12, starting from a broken record, making the trek up here, but we have another township that's looking to join the Geoga Network. We've discussed very lightly with Clarendon, not the specifics necessarily, but obviously as the Board is aware, before we can actually provide any services, we have to have an agreement. So I don't know the extent of it, but they're great partners, Mr. Tyber, Mr. Cooper, Mr. Miller, have been good people to work with, so we're very optimistic and excited about the opportunity.
So I'll make a motion to approve number 12.
Second.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Breck.
Aye.
Yes. Thank you all, yes.
There were some of those Hotmail emails from the townships.
Good morning.
Good morning. Item number 13, Shane Azar with the Engineers Office. County Engineers Office is requesting the Board approve and execute unit price contract with Ryanic paving incorporated for the reconstruction of Butternut Road, County Highway 21, including the replacement of structure 21-00.32 and the resurfacing of sections A through C in Monson Township in the amount of $1,991,420.
Shane, what's the structure? Is that a bridge or?
Yeah, there's a bridge right there by Notre Dame School.
Yes, okay, got it. That's, that's what I assumed, but.
Yeah, we're realigning the road so Butternut will be the through road going forward.
Okay, I think that will be a great addition.
Do we have to buy any property to realign the road?
We did that last year.
I asked that question last time you came in.
Sometimes we get a triangle piece of property for like a dollar.
It was a little more than a dollar this time.
Just wanted to make sure we have enough in the budget.
I think it's already done, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner Breck.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Good day.
Four minutes. Anybody here for me?
I do not, thank you.
Item 14.
This is their Ohio Poverty Services Juvenile Grant Agreement and Funding Application for the 25 through 27. My understanding is that it is due to the state.
What is the amount of the grant? I couldn't figure that out in the paperwork. I saw a lot of numbers, but it wasn't clear to me.
I couldn't figure that out myself. Either, because they have carryover balances that they can roll.
Right, that's why I was confused about.
So it looks at their tentative base allocation for 26 is $139,577 and a tentative variable allocation from reclaim, 245.3940 for $388,116.40 for 26. They have a carryover for new services and reclaim $115,000 with 25% of this year 2024 reclaiming new service grant allocations of 87.58684. And then they have an exemption of 27.413. So then it says available program funds are $503,116.40 and then estimated program costs are $415,664.47 with unallocated funds of 87.45193.
So, so what are they gonna get? So it sounds like they have more money than they need?
So they're, I think they're asking for their program costs of $415,664.47. And that's for 26.
For 26, okay.
It's a two-year grant, so they'll have to come back with 27 numbers.
I see.
Before that.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve, but it'd be nice if someone could come in next time so we can ask questions. I have them answered.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Breck.
Aye.
Yes. Two minutes before 10 o'clock.
Let's do 15. Come on, let's go.
Let's go, that's good.
15, item 15.
I don't think Dan is here tonight. This is the answer.
Item 15, the Building Department is requesting the Board approve an unpaid personal medical leave of absence for Daniel Spada, chief building official during the period of May 27, 2025 through May 30, 2025.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Breck.
Aye.
Yes.
That takes us right to 10 o'clock and then I've cited on this community developments regarding block program, Cindy R. Wright.
Community Needs Development, yes.
Time for our binders.
Morning.
Good morning.
You're doing a good job.
I'm pretty glad we are reading a legal notice. Oh, I have to swear?
Yes, so the first thing I might ask is for a motion to waive the reading of the legal notice?
All right, so I move to waive the, waive the reading of the legal notice.
Is that it?
Second.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Breck.
Aye.
Yes.
That takes us right to 10 o'clock and then I've cited on this community developments regarding block program, Cindy R. Wright.
Community Needs Development, yes.
Time for our binders.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good luck. You're doing a good job.
I'm pretty glad we are reading a legal notice. Oh, I have to swear?
Yes, so the first thing I might ask is for a motion to waive the reading of the legal notice?
All right, so I move to waive the, waive the reading of the legal notice.
Is that it?
Second.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Breck.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay.
That might be a bit, I'm not sure.
My binder.
You brought your binder?
Yeah.
All right, so I have to swear these guys. All right, who would like to give testimony for the CDBG grant? Can you please raise your right hand?
Yes.
Gina, raise your hand, too.
Anybody that is here today that may want to add things.
Okay. Do we have anyone with projects that wants to talk about their project?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'll swear everybody and do you swear to testify truthfully under penalty of perjury? Thank you. Okay, so since we're not, oh, Elaine Walcomacki, program coordinator, no, program manager, project manager.
There you go.
Community and Economic Development.
Good morning, Gina Hofstadter, Director of Community and Economic Development.
All right, so I'll swear everybody, and do you swear to testify truthfully under penalty of perjury? Thank you.
Okay, so since we're not, oh, Elaine Walcomacki, Program Coordinator, no, Program Manager, Project Manager. Community and Economic Development.
Good morning, Gina Hofstadter, Director of Community and Economic Development.
Got a lot of information. So since we're not reading the public notice, we can just go directly into what projects we had submitted. The first one is Public Services for Lake Jogga Habitat for Humanity. Their project was to buy a work truck. And their total project cost was $56,000 with up to $36,000 in CDBG funding and a $20,000 match. Their national objective was LMI, which is low to moderate income and limited clientele. The second project we received was Public Services Facilities for Jogga County Department on Aging. Their total project cost is $189,000 with up to $120,750 in CDBG funding and $68,250 match. Their national objective is LMI, limited clientele, and they were looking to purchase a generator for one of the senior centers. Number three is Public Services for Chardon Township. They would like to install a walking trail at their park to make it more handicap accessible, getting all the way back to some of the ball fields, the pond, and things like that. Their total project cost is $100,000 and they are seeking $100,000 in CDBG funding. Their national objective is ADA accessibility. Project number four is Private Rehab for Maple Leaf Community Residences. Their project is five generators at five of their homes that they run for individuals with disabilities. Project, total project cost is $71,600 in CDBG funding, and they are seeking all of that in CDBG funds. Their national objective is LMI, limited clientele. Project number five is Public Services for Burton Public Library. Their elevator needs modernization pretty bad. All of their meeting rooms, all of their handicap accessible bathrooms are on their second floor. And I think that the elevator is pretty unpredictable. So, yeah. So they are, they are looking for, their total project cost is $223,677. And they are looking for $150,000 in CDBG funding with a $73,677 match. Their national objective is ADA accessibility. Project number six was the Jogga County Agricultural Society, and that is a public service project. They are looking to install five bathrooms at the south. I believe it's the south bathroom, it's by the riding arena. And they are looking to make one ADA shower, and the other four would just be regular showers. And they are looking for a total project cost of $97,100, all in CDBG funding. The national objective is ADA accessibility. And the last project that we received was Private Rehab. It is the DDC Clinic for Special Needs Children. Their total project cost of $178,250 in CDBG funding. They are looking to expand their parking lot. Currently, their lot, I think it has 24 spots, and they are looking to put parking in the back. People are parking on the sides and on, on, you know, in the grass, and it's hard to get in and out of there. So they were looking to put parking in the back, and their national objective is LMI, limited clientele. And then the following are administrative allocations. We would be asking for $41,800 to manage that grant. And our fair housing, we are looking for $10,000 to continue with our programming and brochures and all of that for fair housing. And this is the second of our two public meetings. So any questions, any statements?
Can we go through, just really briefly, the scoring matrix and what these, these different things?
Yes. Okay, so when we scored these projects, it is safety, health, welfare, feasibility, readiness to proceed, permitting. And we have added the previous funding. So if you did have previous funding, we would take, you would not get a total of three points. If, if you were last year's funding, you would get one point. If you were the previous cycle, you could get two points. If you haven't had any, you've got three. So the, we can choose two projects. The two projects that came out at the top for us were Burton Public Library and the Chardon Township Walking Trail.
Can I, can I ask, so why was the Chardon Township Walking Trail, why was that a zero in feasibility?
Because that was, they do not have their architectural yet.
Okay.
So we would have to go out and get, get an engineer.
Just like project readiness, things like that. We could wait on that.
I mean, I was like, it seems feasible.
The only one.
Yes.
It's feasible.
One of those tricky words.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, I figured it was more of a term of art.
Yeah, it's just, we would have to go out and get engineering, so it's not a white ready.
Yeah.
But we can do that.
Okay.
So.
Understood.
But those two came out at the top. Basically, it was safety, health, welfare for ADA clients. And they both had a larger population almost that they would serve as far as helping out individuals.
Is so important, for sure. Not that any of these aren't, but that's definitely has some weight to it.
Right. And then the Jogga County Department on Aging, the DDC Clinic, and the Maple Leaf Community Residences all came out with 17 points. So they were all a really close third together. And then Lake Jogga Habitat for Humanity came out with 12 points, and the Agricultural Society came out with 10 points. So.
Well, I want to compliment you guys for creating this process. Because like five years ago, it wasn't this detailed, it was, you know, the metrics wasn't, you know, that.
Quite there.
Quite there yet.
I'm trying to get, like, make myself understand.
Trying to get there.
So once I can.
You need to find her like this.
We want the binder back, just so you know. We have a tight budget.
It was very helpful, though, I appreciate it.
Great, I'm glad, I'm blessed.
And the maidens as well. I don't have any further questions, what about you guys? Do you want to give people a chance to talk that?
Yeah, anybody in the audience would like an opportunity.
Want to explain your project?
If I, if I might have misspoken.
They can really sell it, I'm sure.
Well, something has been on the wish list for a long time.
State your name, please.
Oh, that's right. Artima V. McConaughey, Charred Town for Creston. It's been on our wish list for a while. We have a pretty decent park up there, everybody's been buying Alderman Road. This will, this will add another piece to the pie. We applied like two, two or three years ago.
The last cycle, yeah.
We were close.
They were, they were right the next line.
They were number three.
Again, because we can't do four, we're only, you know, we can only do the two now, it does skew things a little bit, so.
Better be moved on.
At least projects for this wave of funds will happen next year about this time.
It'll be, we'll get our release of funds in, in February, and then we can start our projects. So I'm hoping to do 2026, these projects will can be completed. We have through October of '27 to complete them, so if anything goes wrong, we still have a good time. But I'd like to get them done next summer.
Burton Library, would you say a couple words?
I am sweetie Ringelbach for Burton Public Library, and I will say, elevator. Just not go off the channel. Hold on. Um, we have been fundraising for years and saving for years and removing targets, because every tech we get, just keeps getting more expensive, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the elevator.
We have two elevators in Burton Village, incidentally. One may possibly be third, but I just don't think that's township. So is the red maple land in the library?
You guys thought about doing like a tower.
They are not fun. Many of the things we had people sucking in.
What I like about your project that's coming up, it's, you're gonna be using it 12 months out of the year.
That's it, yeah.
And that's important in the library and everything else that goes on in that building, so.
Yeah. And they're funding, they're fundraising, they had, I know she had said that they had been fundraising for quite a while.
They worked very hard.
And like she said, it keeps getting more expensive, so, you know.
I appreciate that. I, yeah, and I liked, I liked seeing, you know, what the organizations were willing to contribute as well. Because I think that makes, to me, that makes their project more attractive, they're ready to go, and they've done work to try to get it there.
And in reality, I mean, your Department on Aging, DDC Clinic, Maple Leaf, they've all always been able to contribute.
Yeah.
In the years past, any overages, they've always covered.
Okay.
They do have to provide a letter that any overages they will cover with their match fund, so.
Got it, got it. Jessica, did you want to say anything about?
Oh, sorry, yes, we were, we were looking for a generator at a rest jog senior center. I was certainly when the tornado came through, you know, last year was quite an eye opening moment. And not only do we serve 684 individuals at the senior center, put out 1,094 congregate meals and 7,500 home delivered meals with the Level Three Commercial Kitchen. Also, the subject system and the comp station operates from that center. So having a generator would keep everything running, not only for senior citizens, but in the case of an emergency, we can use that as a, as a public facility to help the community. So that's like a wonderful project for us to move forward on, you know, certainly with what happened last summer. But, you know, we have been blessed that we've been able to receive CDBG funds in the past. So, you know, we did want to throw our hat in, just to see what the CDBG.
Yeah, why not for this project? As we think it would be very, very helpful. Okay, so do we need to move out of the hearing? How does that work, Chris?
If there's any, no other comments or questions?
Is there any other comments or questions? Hearing done.
We close the public hearing at 10:13 AM.
So now we move to 16. Look how that looked out. Perfect, perfect. Okay, so can I make a motion, Anna Vah, for the projects? So I'll make a motion for the Burton Public Library project and the Chardon Township project with the Department on Aging and the DDC Clinic as the two alternates.
Second.
Ms. Butler.
Right.
Ms. Hubbard.
Hi.
Ms. DeWort.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Okay.
That was, that was, that wasn't so bad. Okay, so that was number 17, to select the two projects and rank the additional two. Item 18 on the agenda is the Community and Economic Development Department. We are requesting the board approve and execute the Jogga County Citizens Participation Plan in regard to PY 2025 CDBG allocation program.
Just for correction.
Yes.
There's a different agenda on the table.
We have an updated agenda.
Oh, I'm looking at my wrong one.
Yeah, okay, we do have to go down. Okay. We did do 16, 16, right?
We did 16.
They did 16. Oh, I said 18, didn't I?
Yes.
Seven times, citizens.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So it, the, what is this, a resolution and agreement? Agreement states that you have consulted with various Native American tribes?
That's number 19. That's my state historic.
Oh. Oh, wait a minute, where are we now?
We are number 17.
Okay, hold on.
That's okay.
That's 19.
It's our participation plan. The Citizens Participation Plan requires us to do the two public hearings. We need to, it's, we have to follow that to make sure that townships are consulted. They call it our CDIS, it's our workshop, we call it our workshop that we hold, and we invite all the townships and everything like that for participation.
Get a motion.
Second.
Commissioners.
Right.
Ms. Hubbard.
Hi.
Ms. DeWort.
Yes.
So then we will go to number 18. And Community and Economic Development Department is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 25-126, the Community Development Black Rat and Home Program Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance for PY 2025 Allocation Program.
Okay, so this one I had some questions on. So it says that, so what qualifies as an LMI dwelling?
So we would, if, if we went in to do rehab or demolition in an LMI building, they would have to income survey, which we don't really do demolition.
That's what I was confused about.
Exactly.
Okay, because I, it made it seem like if there was any demolition, like if some private entity wanted to demolish an LMI building, then we'd have to come in.
No, no.
We don't play that arena.
Wants to do it, the rules are totally different.
It made me sweat, although we can read them, that's for sure.
We have to pay them.
Like if we wanted to use the money to buy property where people were living and they were considered low to moderate income.
Okay.
We would have to relocate them, we would have to pay to relocate them.
But that's a, I mean, that's a non-issue with these.
That is a non-issue with our project.
So I'll move to approve 18.
Second.
Ms. Butler.
Right.
Ms. Hubbard.
Hi.
Ms. DeWort.
Yes.
And this one is the one for questions. So Community and Economic Development Department is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the programmatic agreement for coordination between Jogga County and Ohio's State Historic Preservation Office for the administration of programs using HUD allocated funds with delegated reviews responsibilities, authorized under 24 CFR Part 58. So this, do you want to ask your questions, or would you like?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
This one where?
So it says, yeah, it says you consulted with the Jogga Historical Society, the Shawnee Tribe, the Miami.
Okay, so. Yes, there were four tribes, they were all in Oklahoma. I sent out the agreement and an email. Well, they, so.
I maybe, we don't.
The Miami tribe, the government, I don't know, yeah. So.
They were here first.
I just did a training on this, and it was really informative, because you don't think a lot of, a lot of the Western tribes had kind of absorbed the tribes that lived in our areas. And what they find quite a bit is not burials directly, but like the mounds that they built.
Yeah.
They have maps that they lay over, and when, mostly this is for historic buildings. If you want to renovate or to take down a historic building. But anything that disturbs the ground, I would put this project 106 application in. And they will look at the whole area and say, no, they're good to go. Or yep, there might be something in this area. And then there might be a little bit more that we have to do in that area.
Some sort of ritual.
Since we don't, since we don't really do projects that disturb the ground.
Okay.
It's, you know, it's kind of a moot point, but brownfield, I, I did, you know, I'm doing the brownfield through them right now, and the one demolition agreement, I just put both houses through just to be on the safe side, even though they weren't. But if any house is over 45 years, and they tell you, you know, like if you replace your roof in kind, it's okay. If you replace your windows, you need to get that looked at. If you need to do any digging, you have to get that looked at. And it's just so we're not destroying our heritage and our culture, and, because you never know what might be there.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve 19.
Second.
Ms. Butler.
Right.
Ms. Hubbard.
Hi.
Yes.
Ooh.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other questions at all?
Can we just give out money every week? I like that. I know, me too.
We appreciate your effort and time.
Yeah, thanks for looking at the binders and. Yeah, things really work on those, that we could tell you put a lot of effort into it. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tough act to follow.
We get to give away money.
But it's good, there's a theme going on today, I feel like. So, Craig Swenson from Jogga County Job and Family Services. I'm here to talk about, we submitted a resolution for you guys to hopefully recognize and approve. It's been written, but talking about recognizing June as Elder Awareness Month. You know, there's even knowing Jogga County is obviously a wonderful county, we're definitely not immune. folk for, you know, elder awareness and abuse neglect issues, um, last year, and it's in the resolution. And this is, either, these are actual investigations, not just calls. We had 110 elder abuse neglect investigations, where we had groups on the ground, out in the community, following up with concerning calls, these are screened in cases that meet metrics requiring us to screen them in and investigate. If you think about that, that's one every three days. So it's a, it's a concerning issue, you know, even knowing, obviously, we are one of the more, you know, oh, well-to-do and affluent counties in the, in the community, but one of the concerns that, um, the lady, um, from United Way kind of hit on is, you know, we obviously don't have a lot of rental property in, in the community. A lot of people have homes, they've established, they've lived here, they may have paid off their mortgage, but then they go on to fixed incomes, and, you know, but they want to stay in their home, it's been their home, it's their family home, it's where all their memories are, um, but they can't keep up with it, and it turns into a self-neglect situation, um, where the home starts, you know, falling apart, things aren't kept up, you're not as mo, the people there that are living aren't as mobile, um, and I'm sure Jessica knows.
She's, yeah, she's nodding her head in that, you can't.
Yeah, yeah, she, her eyeballs are, like, coming through my eyeballs. And so, you know, there are definitely issues of significant concern, and we have to balance their dignity and respect and the fact that it's their, their home property, with the same time as wanting to protect them from themselves. And so, and us being involved can oftentimes, even though we're trying to save and help someone, it can also be traumatic for them. And so it's a very delicate balance, and I will, you know, commend Jessica's staff along with, because we work very, very closely together with the Department of Aging, with our social worker and their social work staff. And, um, you know, it's that dignity and respect, but also balancing the same time that we need to help these individuals. And so, um, we pull our resources, but I will tell you, um, we are limited on our resources that we get from the state. The state doesn't even, I mean, we have a supervisor and team full-time social workers, but the state only really gives us enough money to fund one of those positions, and we have to use other dollars, um, to supplement that. Um, and one of those that we do is our social services block grant funds that we get, um, from the feds, which, you know, can be, we're a little concerned about if it's going to be involved with any of the bu, federal budget cuts that could be coming up with the big beautiful bill. It is something that we are, I am really monitoring closely, because we receive about $800,000 through a social services block grant that goes to fund that, as well as several other very significant organizations, including Women Safe and many others that, um, we have out there, so that's something I've been monitoring, I know you were just in DC, um, but, and I believe that social service block grant is preserved in the House budget, but we know that the Senate may take a different look at it.
Right.
So it's to be determined, but I have been in contact with Congressman Joyce, just about advocating for that. There is an event that I just want to mention to you guys, um, it's on June 4th, it's the Live Well Festival at Claredon Woodlands Lodge, um, and we'll be there, but it's a, there's going to be free, um, health and wellness. It's, it's really an event for individuals that are 50 and over to attend, it's free, there's, uh, health and wellness vendors, free health screenings there. That's, again, June 4th from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m., and again, we'll be there. If you probably saw Gina Schultz was here, but she had to go for an interview, so she apologizes that she wasn't able to stay, but.
For another job, or?
Yeah, no, no, not, she better not be interviewing herself, but, uh, no, um, and we continue to be very active in other community-related organizations, our supervisor is on the board of C3A, uh, which is, um, a consortium of, I believe it's Lake Geogga, Portage, um, who else is it, Lake Geogga, Portage, uh, Ashtabula, um, but we kind of pool resources, she's on the board of that, they have conferences, so we're really trying to keep up with our best practices and trying to keep a pulse on what's going out, not just in our community, but our neighboring communities, because, you know, we, it's kind of related with what we're seeing, but the cases are on the rise, our investigations thus far for this year are trending to be above the 110 number that I, um.
And, Kirk, where are you getting, like, the calls from? Are these, like, family members that are calling?
It can be, I mean, it's, it's the gamut, it's can be family members, neighbors is, is a big one.
Oh, yeah, I can see that.
Your staff, uh, because they're in there, they go in the homes, and so, but, but where, where the investigative stool tool can be, uh, from the Sheriff's Department, it can be from banks, uh, where people are concerned, um, just a few years ago, they expanded the refer, mandated referrals statute.
Okay.
For elder abuse, um, so it indicated more in people that are going to be mandated reporters, which include numerous financial institutions, because you have a lot of situations where you may have a neighbor that's like, hey, let's, you know, and they may take advantage, like, let's go to the bank, I can help you, you know, do what have you, and they're like, sure, and the next thing you know, you have someone taking thousands of dollars from individuals, so, um, courts, um, I mean, it really can be anyone that could be calling in, but it really is the gamut, but I will say, Department of Aging is, is a big one, because again, you have the meals and wheels, and they get delivered, and they are in the home, and they can see the issues.
Absolutely. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve, um, Resolution 25-127.
Second.
Commissioner's bill.
Right.
Hi.
Yes.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good.
Morning. Just walk that way.
Morning, uh, Charles Teacatch, Maintenance Department, uh, I have two items on the agenda this week, uh, number 21 is, uh, the Maintenance Department is requesting the board acknowledge the statement of qualifications on file for professional design and contract administration, including LDA Architects Incorporated, SME, and, uh, and Verdantis LLC, and select LDA Architects Incorporated as the most qualified firm in accordance with ORC 153.69A for the kennel expansion and renovation at the Geogga County Animal Shelter Building, and further authorize the department to begin contract negotiations in accordance with ORC 153.69B.
I move to approve.
Second, is there a max not to exceed on this, or?
Our budget is $250,000.
Your budget for the whole project?
Yes.
But for the architect?
Oh, for the architect, I'm sorry, um, uh, it's, it'll be under $50,000.
For the architect?
Yeah, well, it, it is between 25 and 50, so it is the medium range, if you will.
For how many kennels?
Well, um, it looks like there's going to be, uh, the expansion of the ones that are there, plus the ones, I'm, I think it's a total of 20, or somewhere around there, but we won't know that until the engineering is done, because whatever takes the $250,000 is what's going to be recommended.
So, let me ask you a question on this, because I'm, I'm starting to really struggle with these numbers that we're putting out there with this, with this architect stuff, is, you mean to tell me $50,000 potentially this architect can go up to, 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 to design kennels?
Well, we are reaching out to this architect, we don't know their fee yet, we are, under, under the code, we are not permitted to discuss fees. We're only able to say small, medium, and large, medium is between 25 and 50.
Who set that number?
The, the ORC, it is, it is written into the ORC.
I, I mean, and I, I guess, so, so, so that, I'm clear, so you, we're going to award, we're going to award this to, to this, to this architect company?
We're going to start contract negotiations, we're not awarding anything yet, we're going to come back to you with the price once we get a price, but we can't talk about price until we identify them as the most qualified firm.
Okay. Because I, I'm just, you know, this is a, this, the, this is a, a, a number that we put forward to be sure that the, you know, that the, the kennel gets taken care of and that the, the right thing is done, and to start losing money administratively for, for something like this, I, I guess, it just, it's really difficult to watch some of these dollars that are going out to this, to, to these other services, and I understand that it probably needs to be done in the public side of things, but I think that there, there's got to be a real look at. And then, you know, the other thing is, is what, what's the, have you guys looked at other kennel companies that actually do this as a service of building kennels, or are we just looking to construct and have, you know, multiple contractors come out and put fences and gates and everything else, because possibility that there's a, there, there's a, there's a, a plan out there, or there's a company out there, or companies that could bid against each other, that have, you know, turnkey, you know, availability to do something like that, that this cost is, is, is not, not even an issue.
Right, we are looking at both options, we're looking at the option to, um, expand the existing kennels and build them out, and then we're also looking at an option to purchase kennels and integrate them into the facility. Both of those require HVAC work, water work, I mean, all those things are required in order to, you know, no matter which path you go. So we are looking at both options, and we will bring the best option and the best price that we can, for the, you know, for the budget of $250,000.
Well, I, I guess, you know, in, I, you know, is it, are we at a, are we at a point that we have so many of these, so many of these projects that come up, that we bring our own architect on board? You know, because when you start to look at what we're spending in money between all of these projects, I mean, you know, the project that was over at the auditor's office for, 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 for something that's less than the size of, of a single-car garage that we spent, how much was, was that number, over $60,000 or something, if I'm staying corrected? You know, and so now we have a potential of another $50,000 here, that's 100, over $100,000, you know? And, and, and I, I think that there's the potential that we're really missing something here when we're throwing this kind of money out, because if, you know, if, if, if the general public would be doing projects like this and spending this kind of money, I don't think that you could do anything if you had to, if you had to hand out this kind of money for every, every little thing that we do. And I think that truly it's something that we need to look at.
Right.
As far as professional service could possibly bring in-house, you know?
I, I, I do think one of the things we have to weigh with that is that if you bring one in-house, you're only going to get so many projects done a year, currently, we have 15 projects currently in engineering.
Yeah.
Just in the Maintenance Department. So you're not going to get 15 if you own, you know, if you hire somebody in.
If you hire one person.
Yeah. You might get one or two projects a year, right?
Yeah.
So that, that's just something, you know, that's something to consider to weigh the options of the number of projects versus.
Yeah, probably the number of projects kind of waxes and wanes, too, you're probably, some days, or some years where you have a lot of projects, others where you don't, I mean, it's just, like, legal costs are the same thing, right? Sometimes things are hot, sometimes they're cold.
And really, I think that $250,000 towards the shelter, I like to see all of that $250,000 go into actually helping the shelter improve.
Right.
But in the last year or two, the, uh, Dog Ward Department has received one, possibly two estates that the family has passed away, and.
Right.
We're receiving like $70,000 and $50,000 here and there, so maybe that money could be used for engineering, so we can have the impact of $250,000 towards the dog shelter.
Yeah, I think Glenn is looking into that, I did mention that to him, so he is looking into that, that extra money, if there is some there. And we are looking for it to be closer to 25, if that helps, only, only because it's usually about 10% of the budget, but we won't know until we actually sit down.
I'd like to call a question.
Commissioner's bill.
Right.
Mr. Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeWolff.
Yeah.
Thank you, uh, the next item on the agenda, item number 22, the Maintenance Department is, is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for bids for the Geogga County Safety Center Visitation Room Alteration Project to be held on Wednesday, June 25th, 2025, at 2:00 p.m. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on May 30th, 2025, June 6th, 2025, and on the county website.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner's bill.
Right.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Thanks.
Commissioner DeWolff.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Did your foot fall asleep back there, Glenn?
No, not at all, amazing. More than y'all.
What'd you do to yourself? What'd you do to yourself? You're limping up here.
Yeah, it's age.
Okay. You had to sit too long, this meeting's going too long.
Y'all working me too hard. Uh, number 23.
State your name.
I'm sorry, Glenn Vernick, uh, Jog County Maintenance Department. Number 23 is the playground out back here, um, what's happening is the fence is melting, it's a plastic that goes around the whole playground equipment, um, it's melting, and what that's coming from is the sun is shooting off the windows back down onto that fence, so that's not part of the warranty, uh, we did extensive, uh, we sent the fence back to the company and everything, so it's, because that's a nature thing, um, it's not part of the warranty, so we did a lot of research, uh, found another piece that should hold up, uh, they're saying it's highly, highly, that'll work, so, and that's what this is for, the $12,600.
Did you explain to the manufacturer that we live in Ohio?
Yes.
Like, how is fence melting in Ohio?
It's, what is, sun is coming off of the window.
Yeah.
And it's.
It's wild, it's like frying an ant, kind of, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, it's something that's very, very unusual, I guess, uh, they were telling me about a story in Houston, Texas, or something, many years ago, where, uh, one of the buildings was all glass, and it was melting stuff down there, uh, so it's.
How much did we pay for this fencing initially?
That, off the top of my head.
I mean, I probably don't really want to know.
So, well, the playground was donated.
Yeah.
But the fencing.
Replacing the fence after three years.
Well, this, the new one is like a metal-ish, and it's going to almost look exactly as what's down there now.
Same color scheme?
Yes.
Um, so I'll move to approve 23.
Second.
Commissioner's bill.
Right.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeWolff.
Yes.
Uh, number 24 is for one of our employees, um, needing some unpaid time off, leave of absence, so that's what I'm, uh, asking for your permission for here.
Um, so I'll move to approve 24.
Commissioner's bill.
Right.
Mr. Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeWolff.
Yeah.
Bye, thank you, y'all.
Thank you.
Bye.
Morning.
Good morning.
Nick Goris, Water Resources, uh, first item for us on the agenda is requesting the board approve and execute an agreement between the Commissioners and Gudtowski and Associates Incorporated for Engineering Services for land planning, surveying at various locations, $25,000 in wastewater, $10,000 in the water, part of that $25,000 that we're using with that will be for the extension of the sanitary sewer for, um, the U Center.
Um, I move to approve 23.
Second.
Commissioner's bill.
Right.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeWolff.
Yes.
Next item is requesting the board approve a contract maintenance form number one, extending the service contract with Hirschberger Roofing and Siding for an additional eight months through January 7th, 2026, in the original amount of $40,000, basically extending their existing service contract.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner's bill.
Right.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeWolff.
Yes.
The next item is requesting the board approve and execute a contract maintenance form, increasing the service contract with Firehouse Eight Extinguisher Service LLP in the amount of $4,000, and extending the length of the contract for one year through March 26th, 2026, uh, they're holding their pricing, uh, that we used last year for extinguisher and fire services and testing throughout our facilities.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner's bill.
Right.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeWolff.
Yes.
The next item is approve a contract maintenance form, increasing the service contract with CUE Excavating Contractors LLC in the amount of $10,000 to the wastewater side, now $35,000, in an amount not to exceed $50,000. We use CUE for certain excavating contracts or maintenance areas, um, we used up the contract to a point on our Pilgrim Village let station, so this is leaving us some space for the next thing that comes up.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner's bill.
Right.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeWolff.
Yes.
Uh, the next item is requesting the board approve and authorize, uh, Ralph Spitaleri, authorized representative, to execute the OWDA fund payment request number one for the McFarland Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Projects for the technical services provided by HDR Incorporated in the amount of $19,593.93, this is a reimbursement back to us. We've already actually paid this invoice, so this is our reimbursement, it'll, it'll all fall on the loan anyways, so, but.
Okay.
Uh, and it's approved?
Second.
Commissioner Spillar.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Uh, next item, uh, it's very similar, authorized Ralph Spillar, authorized representative to execute the O W D A fund payment request number two for H D R um, for the same project, in an amount of fifty-two thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-nine cents for technical services related to the McFarland Creek Wastewater Treatment Project.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spillar.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
This next item is actually a housekeeping clarifying, um, uh, a, a direction to match actual costs that are incurred. So basically, increase to the temporary water permit application fee from fifty dollars that was listed in our twenty-twenty-two fee pay table to a hundred and fifty dollars with a retroactive date of April first, twenty twenty-four, and increase from one hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars with an extra, with a retroactive date uh, from May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, back in April last year with our, um, bulk haulers, our temporary haulers, the cost that we were expending to actually provide that service didn't align with what we were charging. Um, I made a change. I did follow through with the, uh, paperwork to update the fee to bring it to you. So that's where the first one comes into play. And then this next one, effective May nineteenth, is another increase based on requirements and for us to do this to meet EPA requirements. So that increases the fee again. So basically, this is an action in case of, you know, that supports those changes and those fees. It's a no dollar retro fee thing. It's just a housekeeping audit.
Okay, so it's a significant increase, but your, your costs are aligned with those increases.
Our costs were, we weren't even, we were donating basically over the years of the time that we would send our guys out to put the box on, go out, do meter reads, you know, um, and these bulk water haulers are, they're providing a great service, but they're making more off of that water than we are, uh, when they provide it to fill in a pool and uh, for our guys that could be doing other items, we're basically as you're aware, looking at every single penny that we have coming in and out of that door. And this is one of those areas where I said, you know, we need to make sure we're covering our own, so.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, so I move to approve thirty-one.
Second.
Commissioner Spillar.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
And then the final item on the agenda aligns with the same one. This is an additional, uh, permit equipment setup fee to the list previously approved, um, retroactive to May nineteenth. Uh, this setup, the equipment setup fee of five hundred and fifty dollars covers the cost of installation, backflow testing and removal of temporary fill stations. Um, basically, again, falling in line with EPA. At one point in time, we were, but we weren't allowed to do this. So um, kind of affected some of the local businesses, what they do. The EPA said if you do X, Y, and Z, and one of the things that we weren't always, it was, was testing that backflow device um, that to prevent any water backing into our water system. So that's part of that, uh, cost that we need to hire um, a, a professional service to come out and do that backflow testing for us. We've already allocated for that, um, you know, in one of our service providers. So this is just being able to cover that cost, pass it straight through.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spillar.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Question?
Yes, sir.
What's the estimated timeframe for shelters to live around at, uh, McFarland?
Uh, four weeks ago.
Okay.
So, uh, basically, McFarland, we're almost at, by the end of this week, we should be cut down to grade. Um, actually, it's where the headworks and the, uh, clarifiers. So we'll be at final grade. Um, they're actually, the following, we can start digging for the new headworks building, which is, you know, starting to put the shoring in and the graving in to go down thirty feet. So it's, it's active. We're completely active. They have already been into, uh, they've torn down the existing grid building. It's gone. Um, and then they're now into the original, uh, sand filter building um, that has been taken offline a long time ago. Uh, they're gonna start dismantling that, of which that building will be repurposed actually into modern disc filters. Um, so that whole building will be redone and we'll have disc filtration inside there. So we'll start that this week.
I have to connect with you. In the next month or two, I'd like to go up to the job site.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's, uh, it's pretty active. We'll have a hard hat for you and, uh.
I have my own.
You want a photo? I understand all that.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's a shiny shovel.
Okay. So you'll come out to that.
Yeah. No, but it, yeah, it's a.
I don't have shiny shovels yet. You have all those shiny shovels.
It's a big, it's a, it's a big project and it's actually nice to see it. It's been a long time coming. So to see it actually moving, um, we're actually spending dollars and, uh, uh, putting it to good use, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Linda Burhany, Assistant County Administrator. The next three items are things that should be completely comfortable for you because I've been keeping you apprised as we've gone along with the courthouse. Um, they are the three change orders that I told you were coming. Number thirty-three is the purchase of the baggage scanner. Um, we had to get that approved by A D P. This, um, and it is not part of the Infinity contract. It was always going to be outside that contract. So, um, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute change order number seven, increasing the contract G M P Phase One and Phase Two with Infinity Construction Company. Remember, they're covering it for us. We threw it into the project. On the courthouse expansion project, deducting for the addition of ordering and overseeing the installation of the baggage scanner not covered in the original contract in the amount of fifty-four thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spillar.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Um, item number thirty-four, this is a, um, combination of a number of little changes, but in the aggregate, this is actually a decrease in the contract of eighteen thousand one hundred and ten dollars. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute change order number eight, decreasing the contract G M P Phase Number One and Phase Two with Infinity Construction on the courthouse expansion project for the removal of speakers, network equipment, and transaction windows, along with the addition of a clerk and finance counter and additional window shades not covered in the original contract in the amount of minus eighteen thousand one hundred and ten dollars and extending the substantial date of completion by an additional twenty-two days through October tenth, twenty twenty-five. So that's the new date of substantial completion for the courthouse addition. Doesn't change the amount of the contract, but they wanted you to know.
So where are the speakers and the network equipment? Where is that being removed from? Is that all part of that same clerk's window?
No, I think this is, um, has to do with, um, it may be like a witness room or a, um, like a conference room, small conference room. These are things that are all mixed up with the, with the, um, A V system and the judges and the court I T and, yeah. I don't really know the details that much, but they did remove things at the request of the court.
No, I mean, that was what I wanted to, just make sure that this is.
Oh, yes.
What, what they want or giving them what they.
I'm trying to get them to what they want and, and there's gonna be further discussion on that in future days, but, um, we're getting closer all the time.
Okay, so I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spillar.
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah.
Let me ask you one quick question. So back on this scanner issue, I mean, um, so you said A D P approved this?
Yeah, we, we had to go to the A T B, A D P Board to have the purchase approved.
And, and, and based on what? Because isn't this a security item?
Yes.
Why wouldn't the sheriff be the one approving this?
Well, he did.
Okay.
He's the one that selected the equipment and they went back to him and they added, did some additional software with it, but because it touches the network, sometimes even if it doesn't touch the network, we're required to get A D P approval for things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number thirty-six, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board. Wait a second. We need to do number thirty-five.
Yeah.
Commissioner, this is the roof. What happened with the roof is when they went to attach the new building to the old building and they had to open it up in the roof area, they found that the roof on the old courthouse was more deteriorated than they expected. And so this is to, to repair and correct the, the deterioration to the old courthouse roof where it attaches to the new addition. We actually went back and looked. The roof is nineteen years old.
So it seems like this is just one section of the roof though. So is, why are we not just replacing the whole roof?
I can't answer that. I am aware there was discussion of it and there was a price given and then for some reason they, that was removed from the project. It may have been because of concerns about the increasing prices associated with the project. I think it was gonna be like two hundred and fifty thousand or something to the whole roof.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't want us to spend, I mean, we're gonna have guys up there already. So I don't want us to spend this money and then, you know, two years from now, we have to borrow guys up there.
Well, actually, that's probably what will happen. By my understanding, it was always planned that once the new addition was complete, then we would pivot back to the old courthouse and do a refresh of that building. And so I was, my understanding was that the remaining issues with the roof would be addressed at that time. As you know, I've only been involved in this since January, but that was my understanding. Yes, so if you guys know more than I don't know.
I'd like to take a look at, uh, replacing the whole roof on the existing courthouse.
Uh, now? I- is that something the full board wants to do? I mean, I can go ask, but that's a big change.
Because, well, yeah, of course, or I just wanna research it and, and get a price.
Okay. I, I mean, is that something the rest of you are looking for from me? I can ask questions.
Yeah, I mean, I figured this was already handled. That's why I was asking my questions, but, uh, I mean, that's, that's fine.
Okay, all I know is what I heard before. I was not involved, so I, I can at least find out, bring back some information.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want us to be putting like a Band-Aid on a bigger problem or, um.
I don't think that this forty-eight thousand is a Band-Aid. I think it is a.
It's a must fix.
Uh, yeah, something we have to do and it won't be done poorly.
Yeah.
Uh, but it will not be the whole roof.
Right, right.
It'll be the back section.
Okay.
And they showed me pictures of it and it looked horrible. I understood why they thought it was more than nineteen years old. I'm like, no, I remember. They did this roof when I was here and Christie took her about ten minutes to find it for me. Yeah, it was done in two thousand and six in the summer. So, um, I'll be happy to get that information and let you know. Uh, but in the meantime.
Do you wanna still move forward though with this, this one section?
Yeah.
Mr. DeBark? Yeah, that would be my, my suggestion as well. So let's move to approve, uh, number thirty-five.
Second.
Commissioner Spillar.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Hi.
Yes.
Thank you. Number thirty-six, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the request for partial payment number twenty for Infinity Construction Company Incorporated for the Georgia County Courthouse Expansion G M P Phase One and Phase Two expenses in the amount of five hundred seventy-two thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars and five cents.
So does that, the total price, um, it looks like it's just north of twenty million. Does that include the change orders today or I assume not?
I do, I would assume not also.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm. And then can you also confirm that N B five has reviewed this invoice?
Oh, yeah. I never bring anything to you until N B five and T D A have reviewed and said, yeah.
Perfect. All right, so I have moved to approve thirty-six.
Second.
Commissioner Spillar.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, the last item is the Commissioner's Office and I am requesting the board approve the request from the Assistant County Administrator Linda Burhany to be reclassified from full-time to part-time, thirty-two hours per week, effective May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. And again, this is for the summer anyway, so that I can babysit my grandkids, if you don't mind. Well, please approve it.
I was gonna make a faith motion, but I'm gonna deny, but I, all right, I'll move to approve thirty-seven.
Second.
Commissioner Spillar.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, board discussion, very long meeting today. I, I don't have anything to bring, bring up from discussion.
I do. I mean, sorry, guys. I'll be fast. Um, first thing, just wanted to say welcome to Amy and, um, I'm super excited for your role and, uh, it's a big job, but you're the undeniable choice and, uh, look forward to the future with you at the helm. At the same time, I want to, uh, acknowledge Linda and Christie, who really picked up the slack, um, did a lot of work. And the other staff, I know there are other directors uh, when we didn't have a, an, a, uh, County Administrator and, um, you guys never complained. I never, at least not to me. I never heard anyone complaining. I never heard anyone say, this isn't my job. They just got right in there. They served the people. They did it professionally. Uh, and so thank you for that, you guys. Uh, round of applause for me. Everybody did a really great job these past few months. Um, so that, that's just more personal note. We filed the comments with the P C O regarding the closure of the Middlefield Service Office. So that was handled a couple of weeks ago, but we haven't had sessions since. So I just wanted to let you know that that is in, uh, first energies based distribution rate. Case and something that the P U C O will, um, will look at when they're determining first energies rates. And then finally, I was in D C last week for the, uh, White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs. Uh, they had what they call their White House Leadership Conference for Ohio. They're doing a series of these conferences for different states, um, inviting county commissioners. And then we also had a few state legislators as well. This was, Ohio was actually the first, the first, uh, state to have their conference. So we, uh, we kicked it off at the, at the White House. Um, we heard, we had a bunch of briefings from senior members of the Trump administration. We heard from, uh, Commerce Secretary Le Nick, uh, Labor Secretary Chavez, Head Secretary, uh, Turner, and then we also heard from other senior, uh, officials from the Department of Agriculture, Transportation, Justice, Defense, Energy, and so forth. And, um, I can, if, you know, if anyone has questions about specific goals of the administration that were discussed, I can talk about that. But I would say just, you know, broadly, they really wanted us to know that the Trump administration is listening to local governments. They know that we are the boots on the ground. We really hear more from the people um, than they do in D C. And so they want to make sure that they're bridging that gap of communication so that their policies reflect um, what's actually happening in our communities. There was a lot of talk, somewhat amusingly, because there were, um, urban counties represented, including Cuyahoga, but there was, there was a lot of talk about, um, rural communities, rural prosperity, and like the Trump administration's commitment um, to those communities, particularly because his wind didn't come from the cities. Um, it came from communities just like ours. So they are really, uh, focusing on that, on the administration. I think on the negative side, there was a lot of, a lot of talk, not a lot of, um, how is this, these things actually gonna be implemented? Um, but, you know, they just kick things off. So, uh, I'll give them some grace there. I did bring up already with, um, the administration, uh, one issue in Georgia County, which is the federal inspections that our county jail has to go through to house, um, ICE inmates. So of course, our county jail has to go through, uh, state inspections that make it sufficient to, uh, house or to detain, um, American citizens, but then we have to go through all these other additional steps to house ICE detainees. So that's been, um, a beneficial relationship with the county and I think the federal government. But it is a burdensome one, um, on our sheriff's office. So I brought that up to them, uh, because I do think that's in line with the Trump administration's um, some of their priorities. And, oh, and we get to see President Vance's office.
Vice President.
Vice, Vice President. Maybe, maybe I, uh, spoke too soon.
Sure.
Yeah. But, yeah, we got to, we got to see his office and, uh, the pen I'm wearing is because the vice presidential seal that they gave all this was kind of a fun little thing.
Thank you.
Representing Georgia County.
Yeah, it was a, it was a really fun experience. So glad I went.
We'll move into, uh, public comment now. State your name, please.
Yes, Diane Jones of the Intention. Uh, discussion was made about P U C O hearings uh, and testimonies from the three major utility companies. Um, and, um, I was fortunate to be able to follow one day's hearings. Um, perhaps you can tell me if there will be any more? And when we will have a final judgment regarding the four cases that the utility companies file uh, for requests and rate increases, et cetera, et cetera.
You just mentioned the first, first energy utilities or you're talking about?
First energy, yeah, specifically first energy, but also, you know, um, Toledo energy, Toledo, yeah.
Yeah, so they're, yeah, so they're under first energy, Ohio Edison, C E I, those are all under first energy. So I'm not sure about that, Diane, but I will look into it and I can get back to you when, um, so you wanna know when the, I mean, you never know. It's basically like when a judge is gonna rule on something, you just never know.
It just comes up like that?
No, so you kinda just have to watch the docket, put a, put a Google News alert on and.
Okay, but is there a way I can follow it on, on Google or anywhere else?
Um, so I, I, so I don't know the answer to that. I, like, I have a, an account with the PUCO and so I get docket updates, but I don't know if a average citizen can
I mean
can get those alerts, but you might be able to. It's called, I don't remember what it stands for, but it's a DIS. It's their DIS Citizen System is what I get my alerts through.
Oh, wow, wow.
So if you look, if you went on the
I was just hoping to hear a final outcome.
Yeah.
Uh, one way or the other, to know a little bit better out of plan, but, um, a lot of very, very intriguing and interesting and important testimony extraordinarily.
Yeah, I can find out when, when that decision is expected, but I mean, electric rates are gonna spike just in, just in June, I mean, next month because of capacity costs are gonna go up. So capacity is kind of the, um, is one component of your electric bill and it's, it's essentially building the church for Christmas, so they have to build the electric distribution infrastructure for the time when the electric grid peaks. And, and so that, that charge is your capacity charge and those costs are gonna go way on the again. That's what I'm afraid of.
Next.
Anastasia Nicholas, Sugar and Valley Times reporter. It was someone mentioned the burden on the sheriff's office, so I wanted to ask any input on the ACLU lawsuit from all of you, since it's part of the county with the sheriff.
Well, I, I think it's amazing that, uh, I think pretty close to day one, since the, uh, Safety Center was built, soon after that, they took, they took on ICE, uh, prisoners, which helped us pay the, uh, jail off a little bit sooner. And, uh, all of a sudden, because of this talk and hype, uh, about ICE prisoners, then ACLU figured it was a perfect opportunity to have a lawsuit against Jogga County and that there's one or two other counties in the state of Ohio. So I just think it's frivolous that, uh, ACLU would, would do this, but, but then again, they have the right to sue anybody, so that's my comment.
Yeah, I mean, I, we probably shouldn't comment on that too much since it's pending litigation. I mean, I personally don't think it's a frivolous lawsuit. I do think um, that the court will need to decide if these documents need to be released. I, my understanding is the federal government does not want them to be released. Um, and so we, that relationship with the federal government in housing our ICE detainees is an important one, and so um, we're trying to be good partners in that relationship.
Anybody else?